All right, let's go. Let's hit it.
You're good?
Yes. Good evening. Today is Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. The Milford Planning Board is now in session. Let's see, minutes of the previous meeting?
Motion.
Motion made by Pat, second by John.
I can't.
John, you're, okay.
Second.
Second by Joe. All in favor?
Yeah.
You have four in favor, one abstain. There are no 81Ps. Continue review admits amended site plan, 232 West Street.
You haven't trouble talking.
I know.
My goodness.
Okay, Bob.
Okay, so at the last, the last meeting, we had a presented a plan which really wasn't favorably looked at. There was parallel parking along this edge of the existing pavement. There was a retaining wall that was being shown being constructed along here. And so what we've done is we found a way to grade the site. We've eliminated the retaining wall, the six to eight foot high retaining wall that was going to be in this area here. We've adjusted the parking so that it is now up against the building. We've created an area where we're going to flatten out the vehicle storage for the display area for vehicle display. There'll be a climb up to it at a 12% grade and then this area will be at a 6% grade. So, because the applicant was having difficulty in the past with some of the cars on the steep slope that was here that in the winter when they get ice, they would slide into one another. So, so what we've done is we've proposed a three and a half foot high segmented block retaining wall along the property line, along the West Street property line. And allows us to carry the grades in, have a landscape area in the front, some landscaping around it. And then we're showing some vegetated buffer screening along the two residential areas, both on top of the slope and at the bottom of the slope on this side. This is an existing stone slope here. And we're going to carry that stone slope around in this area with a two to one slope being proposed to come down into the level area where the cars are going to come into the inspection garage. Still got the subsurface recharge area for the roof runoff with an overflow to a catch basin, which will then flow to a drain manhole flow to the existing drainage system within the site. Sign's going to be removed. It's in the right of way of West Street. That's pretty much it. Basically, that were the concerns from the last meeting that.
Adding the screening.
Clean it, what's that?
Screening as well.
Yes, the screening's here, see? Screening is up here.
No, I know you weren't here last meeting, so I just wanted to leave.
Yeah, I know. I had conversations with Larry and, you know. And the applicant has been in, you know, had conversations with this or butter and, you know, they've, he's aware of what their concerns are. And he's well intends to screen this significantly along here. There may be, there may be, he may actually put a fence up in conjunction with the, with the vegetated screening.
I definitely, whether he puts a fence up later on, that's fine.
Yeah.
I definitely think it's going to benefit greatly though from some vegetation and plantings. I don't think a fence alone is going to be.
Right, right. No, they'll be, you know, there's definitely going to be the vegetated screening and it could be combined with a fence at a later date.
That's fine.
It could be or it's going to be.
I guess it's going to depend on, on once the, you know, once this person sees a screening and she's comfortable with it or, you know.
Okay, all right.
He's willing to do both.
It's too late in the year now to be doing the plantings.
Plantings, right.
We need to figure out some type of bond so he can continue the process with the building official to get his occupancy for the building.
That's fine. What's the anticipated value of the?
Well, we hadn't gotten that far. We just got this far by today. So, I would recommend that you approve the plan subject to posting an adequate bond. Bonnie, Bonnie can verify what it is.
Are you the abbot?
No, I'm the owner.
Oh, okay. I didn't recognize you with your hat on.
Trying to hide from you, Lena.
Don't take it off.
Okay.
This should work for his site.
Will you approve the plan?
Internally to all the parts he needs to have access to.
Second.
Moved by John to approve the plan, second by Pat.
Requiring a bond for the vegetated screening.
Requiring the bond for the vegetated screening?
I don't want to put words in John's mouth.
No, that's fine.
Thank you, Joe. That's a good, yeah. All in favor of that? Opposed? Unanimous.
Bob, you've got.
Oh, yeah.
Get a rough estimate from him.
Yeah, I imagine he's got, he's got his guy that's doing the site work and landscape. He'd probably come up with an estimate.
Email something over and what, Bonnie, I get it.
Thanks.
Larry will want it back.
Two, three million bucks should more than cover it.
Yeah. No, because John's going to need to see something to be able to.
All set?
I still think two, three million bucks should cover it.
Well, it should, yes.
You all set, Larry?
Yep.
Moving right along.
Thank you, guys.
Lot release, tripartite agreement.
Tripartite.
Tripartite. Cheek it.
Tripartite.
Tripartite. Sorry.
That's okay.
So easy for you to.
Thanks again.
See, good night.
Okay.
Tom Wickstrom, I represent the applicant.
Okay.
And we've been working with Larry and the town engineer about the release of some lots in this project.
I see that.
Yep. They have paved all the way through the existing Field Pond Road.
We paved the whole project.
Paved the whole project actually there.
Well, you've got the base, yeah, the binder.
Right, 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 yeah. To binder code.
All right. I was just going to, did you want me to read out the letters? I think, oh, I want to read the letter.
No, there aren't. You just have the letter from Council Wickstrom about the request.
Okay.
This is similar to what we were talking about in terms of the construction phasing, starting at the northerly end of Field Pond Road where it comes back down to Fisk Mill. So, it starts at the bottom with the first six lots on the westerly side of Field Pond Road, plus the other two that are on the east side. So, you have lots one through six and then lot 34 and 35.
Right.
So, Bonnie's estimate is in there, which came after Tom's letter so that the dollar amount was greater than what Russo Brothers had submitted on Mirage's behalf, partially because, or I would think mainly because not all of the elements along that section of roadway were actually included in the total. I think the, you know, the various amounts and values were okay. It's just that all the elements weren't included. So, the total estimate as far as Bonnie's concerned is 171, 670. And you'll notice in the tripartite agreement itself, that's the number that Tom had inserted in the language. So, as far as Bonnie is concerned, that's, that's an appropriate value as the bank amount, as it says in item two on the second page of the tripartite agreement. The other, the other requirement of the conditional approval contract was that the open space parcels.
Be deeded.
Be deeded to the town and it should be the last two sheets in your packet.
See if that will be emailed.
Is the deed, yep. And I emailed everybody those documents earlier as well.
It's already in.
All right.
Motion.
So, yet I would, I would think you'd want to accept the tripartite agreement first and then do the lot releases as a separate.
Okay.
Motion for the acceptance of the tripartite agreement.
Motion made by, by Pat, second by Joe?
I'll say, or Joe, either one.
Joe? All in favor?
Pick.
Unanimous.
A motion for release lots one through six, 34 and 35.
Motion made by Pat to release one through six, 34 and 35. Do I hear a second?
Two seconds.
Babe?
Joe.
Joe?
Joe, you in?
Joe? All in favor?
No.
No comment?
Discussion.
Discussion.
That's the word next. What is, where we end for a bond?
I'm sorry?
Bond?
Well, the tripartite agreement.
Seventy-one.
Is the one.
Seventy-one.
One, is the one seventy-one?
Yeah.
Through the bank?
It's through the.
Developer, the bank and.
It's through the bank, yeah. It's a tripartite agreement, so.
Three groups.
This will, this will stay in effect through October of next year. He should be done with his first, doing the final paving on this first section well before that. And then as he progresses up through the subdivision, it's likely he'll do that cul-de-sac next.
Yeah, I know.
So, then he'll, then he'll amend the bond.
Okay, I understand that. That's, is it a bond, sort of letter or credit or?
No, no, it's a tripartite agreement. It's not.
Similar to Walden Woods.
Yeah, it's like Walden Woods.
Okay, that's.
That's how I understand it.
It was my honor when I read it from his email and that's.
No, I perceive that as Walden Woods, similar to that.
That's what should I add.
But technically, they could have gotten a building permit on lot one for a model home without a lot release. But this way, it's been released. He can, he can actually do it as a habitable structure if he chooses, so. So, we still vote on the, on the lot releases?
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? There's a motion on the table. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
I think Attorney Wickstrom has the original.
Yep, signed by the bank and by Mirage.
And he's also a notary since we don't have ours here tonight.
He asked me to bring my stamp.
Who needs that? Just Lena?
No, you all, there's a.
How many copies do you have?
I have one copy which can stay here.
I have to initial those, don't I?
And then we'll just get copies from Larry for the bank.
Do I have to initial those? I thought I had to initial them.
No, this is just.
It hasn't been up there before.
He's going to notarize it, yeah.
A while ago, drove by, yeah.
Yeah, you do three.
You want this one?
Everybody has.
I'll let you start. Just to the chair.
Top one. Bad day for me.
And then three more, okay.
Three more, okay. I'll send these down here.
I did hear the thing to hire.
John?
Yes, me.
Right, send them down.
I have to go back. This guy is the worst.
And then three, Lena.
Yep.
Are you happy the whole thing is fair now?
I, you know what, I haven't driven by there. I don't know what it looks like. I didn't. If you, if you didn't tell me you took a tree down, I wouldn't be any to the wiser.
Bonnie inspected it.
I'm not, no, no.
Bonnie is really happy with that. She's happy with Russo Brothers.
Again, I, I'm going to be honest with you.
I know we had.
How often do I go by there? Never.
We need to date that?
I think Russo does a nice job and if Bonnie's more than content, then you know what? Wasn't this easy then? See, you fought for nothing.
No, it was, it was.
You got to do this one. Did you do that?
You have to do it, right?
Listen, if it didn't hurt, that means you didn't feel it. And if you didn't feel it, that means you didn't do it. So, you know what? I understand. It's like being married. You know what it's like. This one's complete. This one's for you?
Yeah.
No.
I'm sorry.
It was just two?
I'm sorry, there's.
Two or threes.
So, it was this one and then three more?
Yep.
So, four in total if you sign four.
No, I think.
I think there's only two more. I think there's only three of them, right?
No, there's three of those.
Three of these and the original.
It's going to stay here and then we're going to get copies.
Okay. Huh? Is this my bad day or what?
Just one location.
Listen, I don't know if I can nominate you for sign patrol. You may get lost and end up in Hope Taylor. When you get confused, you go down the Cape and you take a nap or something. I don't know.
Add over.
Start all over, huh? All right, I'm just waiting for them to bring me back down.
Yeah, well, I said. I'm starting to scribble like Pat. Not as bad, though. Come on.
This goes to Larry?
I'm sure I'm doing the other one.
He's got to notarize it.
Are you?
Yeah.
Oh, he's got, they've got one more to go.
Well, you need.
All the stuff at D.C.A.M., I signed it right out.
Really?
Yeah, he's got.
No, no, he's got something else.
Oh, I think we're done. What do you got in front of you there, Joe? Right there, that sign?
No, that's this.
No. Right in front of you is.
This is the copy in my package.
That's the package.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought it wasn't one of these.
They didn't do any of them. I think we're all set.
It's all billable for you, for us, you know, come on.
That's right.
Right.
I'm a notary, but I don't know.
She's not, she's not, she's not here today.
That's why I said I'm, no help. Well, normally I have, I'm just.
You don't have to sign it or they can.
Yeah, you're right. Normally, I just do the stamp for Karen. I normally do the stamp.
I can read it.
All the paperwork in the, what's it called, for D.C.A.M. now, they sign it that way.
Really?
Yeah. Every change, although we got six copies and six letters.
Oh, I bet you do.
It takes six months to get approved.
I get one of those.
Finally, huh?
Yep.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, yeah, yes.
Well, we're working on it.
Okay. All right. ZBA special permit, Sandy Rodriguez, seven Oliver Court. Dear Madam Chairman, the applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for a reconstruction of a single-family dwelling on the subject property. The dwelling has been damaged by fire. The zoning bylaw provides for replacement of non-conforming structures damaged by fire to the extent of more than 75% of the replacement value by special permit from the ZBA. The structure is non-conforming due to the encroachment into the required setbacks. The lot is also non-conforming as it is undersized. The proposal to reconstruct the dwelling in the same location, all applicable zoning requirements appear to be met. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report forwarded to the zoning, zoning board of appeals. Directly, our town planner, Larry Duncan.
Yeah, it runs, the lot actually has more frontage on Oliver Street than it does on Oliver Court, but.
Right.
It's addressed on Oliver Court, which is the westerly of the two Olivers. But, yeah, this is exactly what that section of the bylaw is for, so.
I make a motion, we give a favorable recommendation.
Motion made by Babe to send a favorable recommendation.
I'll second.
Second by John.
I just have a question. Can we have a quick discussion?
Go ahead. Quick discussion.
I'm not opposed, obviously, that they lost their house. I'm not opposed to that. My only question is, is the carport work always was? Because having one foot, I mean.
Oh, yeah. In fact, it's not clear that the.
That's even a foot there?
Everything around there is tight, believe me.
Yeah, the carport, some of the, the.
Where's the driveway, Larry?
Comes off of Oliver Street.
Oliver Street.
The driveway comes off of Oliver Street.
So, they need to come in and turn. That's why it is where it is.
Well, no, they come straight in. They come straight in.
Oh, oh, okay.
At the street, at the top of the sheet. They come straight in. And in fact, some of the supports of the carport almost look to me like they're on the other guy's property. This, when they rebuild this, they won't be.
My only observation is I'd like to just see the carport shifted over a couple of feet, but.
Well, it's got.
Can it?
It's got foundation. They're, they're rebuilding in the same spot because of the.
Same footprint.
Same footprint. Exactly.
That's okay. That was my only observation. I just.
Where, where this thing says foundation that remains, that, that's not.
That was.
Nothing going up there?
No.
That's clear that that's, that's not part of this?
Right, those are remnants of an old foundation, so it's.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just didn't want anybody to get the.
The best phraseology.
Yeah, I know. I just didn't want to get anybody the idea that we were sending a favorable for.
No.
Two separate buildings with, on top of a foundation that's probably.
Can you request that the abandoned foundation, if you will, be removed? Or is it hidden?
Yeah.
John wouldn't give him a permit.
No, that's, I think it's pretty much gone. But, so we had a motion.
It's not structurally sound for.
Right.
No, I know, but you've gone through the pains and sufferings and now you're rebuilding a house. You'd think you'd want to get rid of the old existence. I'm just talking out loud, I guess.
It's a good point, though.
Okay, so you had a motion and a second for favorable. You'd still need a vote.
Any more discussion? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
You'll like the next one.
Okay. ZBA special permit, 66 Water Street, Bruno Olandi. The applicant is requesting a special permit to allow for the conversion of a retail, retail store to an apartment within the existing two-family dwelling on the subject property. The retail space is improperly added to the building in 2009 as reflected in the records from the assessors' office. The zoning bylaw contemplates possible changes for one legal non-conforming use to another by special permit from ZBA, not from a use unlawfully added to a property. The retail store is a zoning violation and has no standing as a legal non-conforming use. Therefore, I recommend an unfavorable report to the zoning, zoning board of appeals. Larry Duncan, our town planner.
Let's back up for a second. It was a two-family or it was just a single family?
No, it was two.
Two.
It was a two-family.
I don't know. That's why I'm just trying.
It doesn't say it's two-family.
Well, they, yeah, they got an illegal store that, or a space that used to be an illegal store. It's currently vacant now, technically, but it's never been legal, so.
Is that a seamstress or?
Yeah, that was, if you go back before then, that was a store. I don't, they may have, they may have not used it for a time, but I got to tell you the truth. When I was growing up, that was a store.
This is right next to the Variety Store, right?
Yeah.
Well, it's a couple doors down.
Yeah, it used to be, it used to be Mares's Taylor Shop.
Oh, I know exactly what you're talking about.
It was for years.
It was. I remember that.
It was a store for years. Now, now it stopped for a long time and whether it lost its.
It did.
It's, that's a different story, but it was, it was a store back then.
I do remember that.
Yeah, I, I don't know what they used.
I remember it was a seamstress's idea.
The records, the records that they even submitted shows from 96 to 2009. The store wasn't there. The use wasn't there.
Possible. I don't remember when, when they closed that.
So, I had attached that.
But that was way back in the 50s, wasn't it?
Long time ago.
So, you want to take, make a two-story, two-family.
It was later than that.
That's what we're trying to do here.
Well, that too, yeah. That's, that would be.
Yeah.
That's a.
Yeah, there's no, there's no zoning there that allows the three-family anyways to be converted. So, I mean, so I mean, we might as well just give it to them because we're going to vote no and.
Okay.
Oh.
Any other discussion?
I'm voting no.
Send a motion?
Motion unfavorable.
Motion made by Pat to send it unfavorable to the zoning, zoning board. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Babe? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous.
They are going to get that one, you're right. And your other top letter too.
Which one?
Oh, I don't need it. I don't need.
Oh, you don't want those?
Sony put it.
Slam dunk. Oh, this is, this is Pat's favorite time of the meeting.
I hate signs.
Mine, mine too.
I hate signs.
We back to 24-foot balloons or did you catch your arrow?
I fixed it.
Okay, continued discussion on the zoning section, sign section of the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, there were only a couple of things, but one of them, well, two of them actually were important. One of them was my typo on page two, down towards the bottom of the page, the tethered balloons over 20 inches. I made, I spelled it out this time. I didn't use the keyboard to put the tick marks in, so.
That the tethered balloons.
As opposed to two-foot diameter tethered balloons. Anyway, so, so I corrected that. But, let's see, and on page three, up towards the top of the page, under the exemptions. The, the numbering still isn't showing up correctly. Under section 3.9.5, the first subsection is .1. So, the first sub-subsection should be .1.1 and it isn't. It's renumbered itself incorrectly, so I'll have to fix that again.
No, but I like how you changed authorized to utilized.
And that was the, the thing I noticed is because the, this way it's, we know it's our or sign.
I think it covers.
It's our device, yeah.
Instead of us having to worry about the message that they're displaying.
Right, right. So, I changed the word authorized to utilized. And then, under what is now showing as 3.9.5, sub 1, sub 5, I added, "Within the C.A. Central Commercial District, temporary banners can be suspended across the street, which in the C.A. zone means Main Street, basically, if authorized by the selectmen." So, they'd be issuing the same permit to obstruct that they do now for, for different organizations to put the banner across Main Street. That way you don't have to worry about other places in town that aren't in a commercial zone or whatever. And this is where it's traditionally occurred anyway. Those were.
Let's go back, let's go back to the other one about the authorized and utilized.
What page is that on?
Two.
Two, three.
Three.
Three. Oh, okay.
I like the authorized because if you have a construction, a big construction project coming on, the construction company is going to have the thing to go, some of the boards up and that should be authorized by the.
How about we authorize and/or utilized?
Well, the only reason I changed it to utilize is because the police department has one or two.
No, but Babe's got a valid point. 140 or 16, if Mass Highway's doing work to it and they, and they wrecked, wrecked the sign, or if there's a water main break that's not the, that's not the police department's and there's a sign telling you.
But go down to sub 6, even though it's numbered incorrectly in that same list. It says, "Emergency warning signs installed by a governmental agency, a public utility, or a contractor doing authorized."
All right, there you go.
So, that, that's all inclusive. But I just wanted to make sure that the police department, since they own one.
I think they own 2 and 3.
Well, yeah, we make sure we're exempting that.
You cover, you cover what's supposed to.
Actually, actually, though, Larry, I probably, or you may want to think about changing that because sometimes they need to put those signs in private property and they will get an easement to do that.
It says public or private?
It says within the public right-of-way. Permit work within the public right-of-way.
Yeah.
The sign may not be in the public right-of-way. At the end of the day, a lot of times, especially on narrower roads, we don't have the width to do that. They'll go and get an easement so that they can put up an emergency sign for however many months the construction is underway. We don't want to, we don't want to limit that. We want them to be able to put that sign up. So, so to me, if they're putting emergency warning signs installed by government agencies, public utilities, or contractors doing authorized work, they should be able to put that either in the right-of-way or in, on private property if they have the easement.
Well, then we, then we should repeat that under section 3.9.5.2 and we should add a subsection to that that repeats that.
That's fine. I, because I just get worried about that, you know, there's no reason. Because I know on some of the narrower streets, we've had, you know, they're going to have problems trying to put up a changeable message sign and they may decide that they, they really need it.
Okay, so we'll add it under exemptions on zoning lots. We'll just add another subsection under there and repeat that language.
Yeah, as long as it's only those people that can put it up, I'm not too worried about it.
Yeah, because we already exempted any public notice or warning required by a statute, Yeah, because we already exempted any public notice or warning required by a statute, but that doesn't get at this specific thing. So I'll just, I'll just add it, repeat it. But that first section where we're talking about in street rights of way, that'll all get renumbered. The computer likes to...
Yep.
I don't care about the number to write down. That's not really that important.
So that was, that was page three. Let me see, I don't recall anything on page four changed. Or page five.
Where do we, uh?
On page six. Do what?
No, we were just looking at, at the one that you had in three nine five two floor. But that's, that's the ones that are going to the planning board, not, not the ones that would be for other government.
Right.
So it's, so we just need to add that in that section, Larry, like you had said.
Yeah, okay. So on page six, the, our favorite section, three nine eleven, temporary or portable signs permitted. I rephrased and expanded the first one, three nine eleven point one. After talking with the building commissioner, we were trying to figure out a way to limit to the extent possible the number of signs during the year, but recognize that there are certain seasons of the year that different things get advertised. So this now reads, "No more than one such sign should be permitted on the same zoning lot at any one time." And then the exception is that during the months of March, April, September, October, November, no more than four signs should be permitted. So the number four...
I can't support that.
Goes up, well...
Just letting you know.
From which direction? Limiting it to one in the other months or going up to four?
I think fundamentally, our problem lies specific to Tankfield and the banner signs. So instead of having to go through every residential neighborhood and suggesting what they can and can't do, I just don't understand why we can't address the problem. To me, the, the problem is these temporary banners. Excuse me, to me, if those are the offensive items, then we control the offensive items. And we do so in limiting how big they are and for how long that they can, that they can exist. Again, I, but see, I don't have a problem. Let me just finish my thought. I don't have a problem for people who put out banners congratulating their child from graduating from this, this, or that, or that they have a child coming home from the services. I don't have a problem with those. But what's offensive to, seemingly to most people, is the advertising that's going on in and around, you know, Tankfield and Louisa Lake and so on and so forth. That's what seems to be offensive to most people. But yet, we want to address and start limiting what people can and can't do in their own backyards. I just don't think that that's the right way to handle it.
But I, but I think, I, I think you need to limit how many signs people can put up. I don't, I don't, I don't particularly like the idea whether somebody has the right or not to live next to somebody's house that has fifty signs in their front yard. I'm sorry, I don't think we should give them the right to do that.
I don't know of any...
I don't, I don't want it to happen, but let's put it that way.
I don't know of any such incidences. Maybe I'm naive. I just don't know of any.
I want to make sure there isn't. I think that's our job. So, you know, I, I think that, that is within our purview. The problem, the problem that I have, and actually I sorta, I sorta like this to a certain extent, but the problem, Tankfield and Louisa Lake, the only way that that's gonna be solved because of where they are, is that has to go to, that has to go to a special permit. It has to go to a zoning variance. They have to get a variance to be able to put the signs up. That's the only way that we're gonna do this, because they're in residential zones, as far as I'm concerned. I don't, I don't want to have it legal to have banners in people's front yard that are gonna be the same size as people are gonna want to put on Tankfield.
Again, Joe, and forgive me, maybe I'm just being naive. I don't know of anyone that has fifty signs out. I don't know of anyone that has huge banners in their front yard. Other than the fact that certain people, I have noticed, will put a banner out when it's their child's birthday, they've graduated from college, they've graduated from high school, their child is coming home from the services, or they're going to the services for that matter. I don't find those offensive and they're not there year-round.
But I don't, but they're also illegal and I'm not sure that if you let people put up banners that are, that are five by, by seven feet, that some people in someone's house wouldn't decide that all of a sudden, hey, you know what? I can make money and sell my space because I live on just as good a corner as Tankfield. What, no, I mean, what would stop anybody from doing that? So I want to make sure that we do stop them from doing that.
And I can appreciate that, Joe, but sometimes we also have an obligation to come up with something that is actually passable. And sometimes the more restrictive you make it, the less likely we will to succeed with something that everyone can subscribe to. That's...
Just, just to, just as a, as a point of information, it's been my experience that this latest kerfluffle over the signs at Tankfield is just that, the latest. In the whole scheme of things, it's very seldom that we get complaints about that. The majority of the complaints are the signs, the proliferation of portable signs on people's yards and residential areas, in their residential front yard. Like the stump grinding sign I have to drive by every day. That just stays there forever. They, the stumps have been gone for two years and the damn sign's still there. But people call and complain about that. Different people call because they occur in different neighborhoods and they have to look at them. Then there are others that, like the Tankfield, when, when they get all crazy and put up a hundred signs, then everybody starts calling. But for the most part, that doesn't happen. It's everywhere else in town. So, you know, you're both right. You're, you know, in terms of your perception of what it is, but you shouldn't assume that your perception of what it is is exclusive. Because, because while you may be right about the banners on Tankfield, Joe's right about all the other mess that's everywhere else in town.
Forgive me, I don't want to be right or I don't really want to be wrong. I just don't want to be so restrictive that it irritates people to the point that this will not pass. That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Well, I, I think in a certain sense...
I understand. I don't, I guess to your point, limiting the amount of maximum signs that you could display, I guess to your point, would preclude anyone from ever having fifty. Okay, I can subscribe to that. Can I subscribe to, you know, five months out of the year? Probably not. I, I mean, I just, you know, if there's a give, if there's a give and take, then I'm sure that, you know, we can all compromise and I'm sure, then, then this can be sold.
Yeah, that could, well, that could be changed, but I...
This was a way...
I don't have a problem, hold on, I don't have a problem, you know, those banners making sure that they are special permits. I don't have a problem with that. Because that to me would solve a lot of... At least it's linked and people know they're there and there's gonna be, you know, some sort of...
And then the selectmen can, can monitor it because in order to put them up, you have to go to the selectmen, you have to tell them how big they are.
And they have to tell them their own rules and regulations.
Right, and they come up with their own rules.
Right, and I'm fine with that. It's a decent compromise.
That's the mess we're in right now. Is that you've got people that don't do signs doing signs. So if you want to do signs and be content neutral, then it's, I think it needs to be done as part of this bylaw. If you want to include those specific locations as part of this bylaw and...
I just think you consider a banner a special, a special permit.
But how can you, how can you separate that location without going to a variance?
I don't, I think you just separate the size.
Well, you, you could do it on town-owned property.
But that's not technically town-owned, it's maintained.
Well, but you can say controlled or may, or owned by the town, whatever the language would be. But I think to make sure that all sign regulations are content neutral, you need to be able to somehow include it in this, in this bylaw amendment. But the, but back to the, to the point of, of the new language, the concept here was to, was to say, okay, the underlying regulation is one temporary sign a year per lot in a residential zone, you know, in the residential office, residential zones, period. So that's it. And then, okay, you've got certain political seasons then. What months are they? And what's the likely, you know, absorption rate for that?
Can you define that without having time? Because I think you, I mean, the problem you have is what happens if you have a special election?
What happens if you have nasty weather?
Well, we have...
Well, right, right now, we, we have that within the by, that's within the bylaw now. It's supposed to be down within a certain amount of time. They're only supposed to go up. So that's already there. We deal with that now.
But you can't keep that because it's content-specific.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is, what happens if we have a special election? Not gonna be able to put up signs?
Well, if, you would have to figure out what, what the, the schedule is. Whether or not these months would cover that or not.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You'd never know when you would, it's possible. They could call a special election at any time. What I'm saying is that, is that revolves around an election. Can we say that a month before, a month before, the month of and a month before the election, you can put up signs?
No, because it's content-specific.
No, I'm not telling anybody what they can do. I'm just telling them when they can do it.
But you're relating it to an event. You're relating it to an event that relies on the content to decide whether that sign is okay or not. That's, that's why I approached it this way after talking to John, is because he has no way realistically to enforce any of this if we say, you know, thirty days before and thirty days after, or, or, you know, sixty days before. You know, he, he just can't track that. And this way, it wouldn't matter who's doing what to whom. You drive by a lot and there are four, or five, or six signs and it's not one of these months and it doesn't match the math.
Yeah, I understand, I understand that. I'm more worried about when someone gets up at town meeting and says, well, what happens if there's an election in this month?
Well, that, I was just...
And we go, and we go down the tubes.
You're allowed one annual sign.
You're allowed one, like this.
You know, Stumpy the Grinder there will be out the entire year. So that doesn't eliminate anything for those people that find it offensive. So I guess, you gotta take Stumpy down and you gotta put somebody else up.
Well, and I'm, I'm thinking to myself, is that passable? That's what I'm worried about.
Well, a special election's only gonna be one, 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 one sign, one person.
Yeah.
So...
So I guess the, the, the general concept, barring all the special circumstances, is a way to get at the two different or three different, I mean, you may say, March and April, you can't have more than three. And then September, October, November, you can't have more than four. Or you say three in one and five in the other. Whatever it is, this is a way to get at the shorter duration for the larger number of signs because what, what they're likely, the event that we can't talk about in the bylaw is likely to occur in these months. And, and that's, that's the majority of the signs that you see. And, and whether, maybe you want to say you can have two signs instead of one sign as, as the basis. You know, I like the one, but that's, you know, that was just a way to show how you can...
Yeah, that's, that's certainly the discussion point. I think every, I think, I think other people need to weigh in on, on that number because that's, that's gonna be the overriding thing as to whether it passes or not. I, I don't have, you know, I don't know what the right number is. I know what I'd like, but that's not necessarily the number that passes. So that's, that's what I think we have to work on, on that. I like this better than where we were. I mean, almost, it almost makes, makes it that you have one permanent sign and so many... In this one, one permanent sign and three temporary signs. Because in effect, you know, I thought about it and said, we would never be able to control a temporary sign and saying it can only be up for sixty days because somebody could go out and put a white mark on the sign and say, that's not the same sign. I changed it. I changed it thirty days into it and you'd never know.
But this way, you know, if, if, if you could always have one sign, you know, you, you may want to change it.
Yeah, you can do whatever you want.
As long as you don't have more than one, unless it's one of these other months.
Right.
And that way people have the ability to...
So if you have a real estate sign...
Well, they could have a real estate sign.
That's as much as you can have.
It's one, one real estate sign.
We should have him in to...
Well, if that's, if that's a temporary sign, yeah.
You can't have, you can't have the tub grinder and you can't have the real estate side at the same time.
Right, so if you're gonna sell your house...
So I hope you're not doing tree work while you're selling your house.
Yeah, that's right. But at least this is a way...
So how many political signs can you have going in April when everybody is running for, running for...
Maybe four.
Four.
Well, depending on...
Right now, it's four.
Right now, it's four.
Right now, the way it's written, it's four. That's, whether that's right, wrong, or indifferent, that's Larry's attempt to put a number in. That's a talking point.
Yeah, a way to, yeah, a way to see how you could structure this and then the building official can enforce it because all he has to know is how many and which month is it.
Okay.
And, and he wouldn't be issuing permits or, you know, requiring registrations for this because these would be things that are allowed as a right, as long as they play by the rules.
Yeah.
Okay.
Kevin's chuckling over there.
No, I, I...
You're putting him to sleep.
I think this is better than where we were before.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's...
If you back me up into, let's go back to page two. Three nine four three and three nine four two.
Hold on a second.
What are we defining a string of lights?
Hold on. Strings of lights.
String of lights is like, is that Christmas lights?
No, because, no, because if you go through it, it says holiday lighting is not...
Okay.
So what is string of lights? That's what I'm confused. Because when I think of string of lights, I think of holiday lights. That's why I'm confused. What is string of lights?
Just that, a string of lights, unless it's...
All right, let's assume, all right, back me up for a second. Because now, I, I just, I like to put things in the context. Let's assume that I have a pergola and I want to put strings of lights up there to illuminate it. According to this, would I be in violation of the bylaw?
Looks like you would be.
I suppose technically.
Okay, so I can't support that either because there's a lot of people that have, you know, outdoor sitting areas that have lights in them. I mean, like, this is what I'm saying, why do we go after things that aren't a problem? Just like I have a problem with, and I know, and I know people that have stop signs and yield signs in their backyard. There's no one driving back there. They're not offending anyone.
What are they doing there?
Where did you get that sign?
Who cares? You can buy them. You can buy them. Believe it or not, you most certainly can buy them and I'll give you the receipts.
I'm just kidding.
Absolutely.
Who cares?
I don't want, I can't support something that...
It's the one you had in your dorm room with college, right?
It's going to upright people.
That's right, so...
But I, I don't like making rules for people that, so that you can just irritate them.
Well...
So why don't we just get rid of three nine four two and three nine four three?
Why don't you look at the context that this is being done in? The context is you drive in commercial areas and have all kinds of sign clutter, all kinds of flashing lights, all kinds of strings of lights and pennants and banners that distract the motoring public from paying attention to where they're driving.
I'll leave pennants and banners alone.
Well, there's that, there's that area going to one oh nine. There's always all kinds of...
But flashable lights are prohibited.
Political signs and people put signs right in that center of Route sixteen and one oh nine. Do you ever see all that?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's state land.
It is?
No, it's called by berries. It's usually called by berries.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry.
Well, if, if you need, if you need some exemption from, from lighting in residential settings, then look at that. But I don't think you want to eliminate this because the majority of the areas where you find all this stuff that's prohibited aren't residential areas.
I'm hoping to exclude neighborhood disputes and battles based on a bylaw that prohibits strings of lights. And I don't find strings of lights in someone's pergola or one of those, you know, seasonal porches that people have to be offensive. I don't...
Then let's see if we can come up with language that gets to...
I just tell you what I have problems with.
I know, but you...
They're supposed to be there now.
So what? Well, who is? People are in business. They're selling. They're working.
I, I kind of agree with Pat on the string of lights. I really do.
Well, let me see if I can come up with language.
I really think we're...
I also have a problem with balloons. What's the problem with the balloons?
Well, you're the, you, you guys are gonna have to defend whatever goes to town meeting. And if you want to go to town meeting and say, here's a bylaw that lets everybody do whatever the hell they want, so almost to the extent that we don't need it.
I have to disagree with you because three nine four six, when we refer to flashlights and things of that nation, of that notion, I think that covers the signs that you're referring to. Strings of lights in someone's backyard is not the same as a flashing light that is distracting to the motoring public.
But how do you determine whether this flashing light is in your backyard or on Main Street? You can't do that any more than you can talk about the strings of lights in your backyard versus Main Street. So what I'm saying is if you're so worried...
I think you're more prone to have strings of lights in someone's backyard than you ought to have a flashing light.
But if you're, if you're worried about the residential application, then we'll come up with some language, try to, to address that. But you can't throw the baby out with the bathwater unless you want to stand up in front of town meeting and, and tell them what a bad job we did.
That's a good point.
I, first off...
What about all these Christmas lights that people put...
Christmas decorations are...
Decoration is part of the decorations?
Holiday decorations.
Holiday decorations.
Excluded.
They're completely excluded, okay.
If you can re-categorize strings of lights...
Here they are, here.
If you can re-categorize stop signs that are in back of people's yards that are not offensive to anyone.
We're gonna put, we're gonna make sure that...
Thank you.
The only illegal stop signs is...
Then we can fight about the balloons. I'll lay a date.
I mean, I guess to a certain extent...
Pat's stop sign is illegal.
Well, I guess to a certain extent, I'm not sure that a string of lights, whether it needs to be defined or not, only in the sense that I don't know that a string of lights is a sign. If the string of lights presents itself as a sign, that's a different story, but a string of lights to light...
Is not a sign.
Is, to me, not a sign. I mean, to me, that would be the definition difference, is I want to regulate something that somebody puts up a string of lights that spells out a sign of some sort, as opposed to a string of lights that's being used to show a path or whatever. I don't think those, so maybe that should be the wording that you use in there to define that, because...
We show Christmas trees, and we put up a string of lights.
Yeah, happy holiday, you could put that on...
I consider those holiday decorations...
Yeah, as long as you put a red one on those strings.
Holiday lights and decorations.
I wanted to know what the definition is.
So, I mean, maybe that's, because that, to me, would be the difference. I agree with Pat that people put out, I have lights in my backyard. Their purpose is certainly not a sign. It's to provide lighting for my backyard.
All right.
Thanks, Joe. So, we're getting closer.
All right.
I'll take a look at it.
So, take that out.
He's gonna re-categorize it.
Recategorizing.
He's gonna have to save the bathwater on this one.
All right.
Save the baby.
All right, the baby.
I don't care about the bathwater.
A little bit more adjourned, yeah.
A poor baby. Gonna be dehydrated soon.
Okay, so I'll fiddle with it some more.
Good.
So, next item, time to adjourn. Oh, wait, there's one other thing. One of your pieces of correspondence, I just copied you guys on a letter that IDC, that I sent as chairman of IDC to the District Highway Director of District Three, the Mass DOT in Worcester. In terms of taking another look at trying to get a two-way Beaver Street, there seemed like there may be interest in at least looking at it again and moving the southbound ramps at Exit nineteen, or the southbound ramp, as it comes down to one oh nine, moving it closer to four ninety-five to pick up at least fifty feet that can go toward the stacking that's necessary if we do a left turn as you're westbound on one oh nine, because that's been the choke point all along, is that there's not enough room between the lights at the southbound ramps and the Beaver Street lights on one oh nine.
What happened to the...
The roundabout?
The roundabout.
Well, there are too many private interests that can't get together on that. Because that would have been the solution. Well, that would have been the solution to the...
I don't think that's a solution.
Well, I don't personally like roundabouts, but in terms of not having a signal there, that does away with meeting a left-turn weaving lane. Anyway, so that's...
The only comment on that is if they start to become more serious. The only other consideration you're gonna have is birch and beaver.
Right.
If that turns into two-way traffic, there may be some thoughts on some signalization there.
Yeah, that would have to be considered.
That's the only other comment they have relative to that.
That's kind of down the road. No opponent.
I just said, if it ever gets more serious.
There goes the shot cat. Go on.
It is nice that, you know, no traffic comes up, because it is.
It's great. I like it.
I said, till the day you put up one of them food signs or stop signs.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Pat, second by John, adjourn. Good night, everyone.